All right, good evening. Good evening, everyone. It's six fifty. I'd like to call a public hearing to order. I'm gonna have Tim read this public hearing notice in a minute, but before I do, just a quick summary. At the last meeting we had regarding this matter, we were talking about replacing a boiler at Brownstone that had that had gone on us. So we had talked about replacing the boiler as well as a hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks. The total of the money was four hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred thousand sidewalks and three hundred and twenty-five thousand with a boiler replacement at Brownstone. It passes on. Tim to read the details, so.
Certainly. Board of Selectmen, legal notice of public hearing, April second, twenty twenty-five, six fifty P M. Buck Foreman, Community Room, two sixty-five Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, oh six four eight zero. Pursuant to section one, two, zero, three point four of the Portland Town Charter, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, April second, at six fifty P M. In the Buck Foreman Community Room, to consider public comments and questions, both orally and in writing, on the below supplemental appropriation. Public asset access also through the Zoom link A at Portland, uh, W W W dot Portland C T dot org. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen hereby approves a supplemental appropriation in line item number zero, one dash, zero, nine, three dash, zero, zero, zero dash, nine, zero, zero, one, two, transfer out capital non-recurring town in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. And a supplemental appropriation in light item number zero, one dash, zero, nine, three dash, zero, zero dash, nine, zero, zero, one, three, transfer out non-capital non-recurring B O E in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand funded through an increase in estimated revenue to line item number zero, one dash, zero, zero, zero dash, zero, zero, zero dash, zero, zero, three, two, eight, structural permits of two hundred and seventy-five thousand and one hundred and fifty thousand from unassigned general fund balance. And be it further resolved, the Board of Selectmen hereby approves an increase in estimated revenues in uh, number zero, eight dash, one, four, one dash, zero, zero, zero dash, zero, zero, five, zero, one transfers in general town fund of four hundred and twenty-five thousand and increase in supplemental appropriation to expenditure line item number zero, eight dash, one, four, one dash, zero, zero, zero dash, eight, nine, zero, one, zero. Board of Education dash system-wide B O E dash H VAC upgrades in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand and an increase in supplemental appropriations to expenditure line item number zero, eight dash, one, four, one dash, zero, zero, zero dash, eight, nine, zero, nine, zero. Public Works Highway Division Vehicle Maintenance Sidewalk Construction, non-grant in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Dated this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty-five, tested due by Michael A. Pelton, first elect. What's the A stand for?
Anthony. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, as I said, it seems complicated for those that might be listening, but we, because it was an unexpected expense and a significant one, um, our, our Director of Finance needed to pull funds in um, in a way that would provide the funding they needed to get it done, so. Somewhat complicated, but the end result was getting the money available for them to use it, so. With that being said, if anyone has any questions in the audience, or if anyone has any questions.
Just make a a point. Uh, Mike, you said we're replacing a boiler. I just want to make sure I'm got this right there.
Two boilers. Yes, the boilers, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. One of the boilers failed and the other one is just as.
Due to the age, just.
The age and it was thought best to replace them both because of cost and value and savings, yes.
Same, same design and it's showing some of the same signs, yes, so early failure.
Absolutely. All right. We'll give it another minute or so. Going once, going twice, no questions? All right. Um, I'm gonna hereby close this hearing. Time is? Six fifty-five.
Good evening, everybody. The time is six fifty-five. And I will now call the special town meeting order. The first order business is to elect a moderator. Are there any nominations?
I'm not gonna try and tell him.
Thanks, guys.
I'll, I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close nominations?
Make a motion to close.
No second.
All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So moved. All in favor of electing John Dillon as moderator, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So moved. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mike. I'd next like to read the call, the meeting into the record as published in the River East News Bulletin on Friday, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. I would also ask that the town clerk record the return of notice along with the minutes of this meeting. Legal notice of special town meeting dated April second, twenty twenty-five, six fifty-five P M. Buck Foreman Community Room, two sixty-five Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, oh six four eight oh. The select, the electors and those persons eligible to vote in town meetings of the town of Portland, Connecticut are hereby warned and notified that pursuant to chapter, chapter twelve, section twelve oh three point four and chapter five, section five oh three of the town charter, a special town meeting will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, April second, twenty twenty-five at six fifty-five P M. In the Buck Foreman Community Room, two sixty-five Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, for the following. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen hereby approves a supplemental appropriation in line item number zero, one dash, zero, nine, three dash, zero, zero, zero dash, nine, zero, zero, one, two, transfer out cap non-recurring town in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. And a supplemental appropriation in line item number zero, one dash, zero, nine, three dash, zero, zero, zero dash, nine, zero, zero, one, three, transfer out cap non-recurring Board of Education in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars funded through an increase in estimated revenue to line item number zero, one dash, zero, zero, zero dash, zero, zero, zero dash, zero, zero, three, two, eight, structural permits of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from unassigned general fund, fund balance. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves an increase in estimated revenues, number zero, eight dash, one, four, one dash, zero, zero, zero dash, zero, zero, five, zero, one transfers in general fund town of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and increase in supplemental appropriation to expenditure line item number zero, eight dash, one, four, one dash, zero, zero, zero dash, eight, nine, zero, one, zero. Board of Education, system-wide B O E, H VAC upgrades in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and an increase in supplemental appropriation to expenditure line item number zero, eight dash, one, four, one dash, zero, zero, zero dash, eight, nine, zero, nine, zero. Public Works Highway Division Vehicle Maintenance Sidewalk Reconstruction, non-grant in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. A copy of the complete resolution to be voted on is available for the public inspection in the town clerk's office and on the town's website at W W W dot Portland C T dot org dated this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty-five. Attest Michael A. Pelton, first elect. I'll now entertain a motion to introduce the resolution entitled supplemental appropriations for transfer out cap non-recurring B O E and transfer out cap non-recurring town and increase to estimated structural permits and use of general fund balance. And I will waive the reading of the resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice habit. We'll now call for a public discussion on the resolution.
I think this is a good thing. I mean, to keep that building heated.
Yeah, I also think it's important to note the urgency. You know, given, given the lead time, um, the fact that one boiler is down, the other one could give us trouble when we go to heat up and the fact just the lead time is gonna push us towards uh, heating season next year, so. Something we need to get moving as quickly as possible.
Couldn't agree more. I'll get the sidewalks. And the sidewalks.
Sidewalks, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
Just for, uh, I can give you for clarification. The town received a grant funding via the Connectivity Grant and Local Capital Improvements Grant for the sidewalk project. The funds were used for design of the Connectivity Grant and the Highland Homestead Avenue sidewalk project and its anticipated additional hundred thousand dollars funds is needed, so that's what that's. So that combined with the money for the two boilers is, is what we're voting on tonight. Anybody else? Being no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to move to the question. All in favor? Oh, you have a motion, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Can I sit? Congratulations on those.
Oh, sure.
Can I, can I buy a sign book?
Any other votes?
The results are twelve in favor. None opposed. The motion passes.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to close the meeting?
Make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is closed.
All right. Very good.
Seven oh three.
Good evening, everyone. It's now seven oh five. I'd like to call our regular first select me meeting to order. Could everyone please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like the correct, it's the Board of Selectmen. I'll call the person. That was the second time I've done that. All right, um, like to make a motion to accept the agenda. I have no changes on here.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, budget workshop and adoption of the budget. Wanted to say a couple of things uh, before we get to that. First, um, I appreciate all the hard work that Tom did over the last couple of months getting this budget together. Tom and I worked uh, very closely together. There was a lot more to it uh, than I had thought being on this side of it before. Um, so Tom puts heart and soul into what he does. He cares about every dollar. And especially toward the end, as we did our last meeting, uh, the amount of work that was done by both Tom and the department heads was something that was truly amazing to me. I don't think I've ever seen that in my time on the Board of Selectmen where people from different departments were working together to find the money that we needed to get the budget passed. Um, and that was, uh, that was very encouraging and that made me feel good about how we do things and uh, the fact that everyone cared about getting this done and what's in the best interest of the town. So I appreciated that. It was a lot of work at my end, as, as I believe Selectman Hernandez said, or Heckman, uh, uh, Selectman Bobby Hetrick said, uh, this was the first time it was my budget. So I took a lot of care of putting it together. I tried to look at it as if it was my own personal budget, uh, made sure that every dollar was looked at. Um, and I feel good about what we did. Um, I think we ultimately came to a better budget at the end of the whole process. And I think this is gonna be good for the town. So with that, I'd like your emotion to adopt the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All right, discussion.
I'm just gonna say I'm not particularly thrilled with the increase, um. It was a tough workshop. Everyone pled their case. Uh, I understand it's, it's very tough to do and, uh, um, I would just like to say I, I think we could have done a little bit better, but with that being said, we could move forward with the motion.
Thank you, Michael. All right, that being said, all those in favor of passing this budget? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Four? Of, I, I, of course. All right, and motion passes, passes four. And Rick is not online, is he? All right. Very nice. Um, approval of minutes, uh, had, has that one read the minutes from the last two meetings?
Yes, sir.
Can I get an approval of those minutes? Someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve. You wanna do them individually or all at once?
Assume both.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from the previous meetings of March eighteenth and March nineteenth.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Um, communications and correspondence. I have one communication uh, from Liz, uh, former president of the Committee on Solidarity. Um, there was a question asked at a meeting, two meetings ago uh, by Mr. Hernandez regarding what's more details about the program? So, uh, she has sent me a letter to all of you here. Um, you should have in front of you. If you haven't read it, please do now. While you're reading that, I wanna relate um, to one of the answers to that question. So uh, with regards to the question that was asked about, um, about what the difference between students attending the meeting as members of the public versus students being reps on the committee. Uh, in her opinion, if you're, if you're attending the meeting as a member of the public, you're not making a commitment. You show up if you feel like it. If you're a member of the committee, you make every effort to attend and you're much more likely to be invested in the work of the committee. I think it goes for adults as well as students. I think in turn, as members of the committee, the representative's work and input is way differently than if they were members of the public. I think they will receive a higher level of appreciation from the committee, develop pride in the work and a deeper sense of what they're doing is important. I think Liz is right on on that. I think it is a distinction with the difference. And, um, I think this is a really good idea. I think there's no downside to it. Um, and I would favor it, but I wanna put it out to the members and make it the board.
Just to be clear, I just, so I'm not sure if we said exactly what this is about. This was a proposal from Liz to have two Portland High School students serve as non-voting members on the Committee on Solidarity.
Yes, that is okay. Thank you for clarifying. Discussion.
Now, does this require any action or not? I mean, it's almost like pointing B O E student liaisons.
Yeah, I think we'd have to just, I think we'd have to just have a motion. And I don't know whether or not there's another place on the agenda, if you were looking to do it here.
Yeah, I, I thought if you maybe.
Cause it's not specifically a noticed item to vote on, um.
Right.
But the to me, I think we probably would at least just wanna have a vote that creates them because they, we, there was a vote that created that committee with a specific number of members and and things of that. So we probably would wanna have a, a vote that say we want to increase. Um, that we wanna add two more non-voting members. I don't think there's any harm in, in them putting together the students. I, I don't know, I don't know if there's any real opposition, but, um, I, I just not sure. I'm just trying to look and see, you know, where we could.
The only question I have is in the final paragraph of Liz's letter, she states, um, well, the idea of inviting two Portland school students to serve as non-voting members of Command Solidarity was proposed to them by Portland High School Black and Latino Studies teacher Ryan Ott. But then she goes on to say with Principal Kate Lawson's and Superintendent Dr. Britton's approval, Ryan would choose. So I'm not sure, you know, I mean, I agree with Jim. I think because we created the Committee on Solidarity, I think we, we say that we approve the concept, but I think it sounds to me like now it has to go to the high school for their approval, because it, it would seem to indicate here that neither Principal Lawson nor Superintendent Britton has given this approval yet.
So I spoke with, uh, with, uh, Superintendent Britton and he was in favor of it when he said earlier, so he's aware of it. Um, he's given, he gave his full support. Now.
Yeah, I think what that means is that, that the principal and the superintendent would give the final approval to which students are chosen, that the teacher picks them, but they provide it as the administrator.
That's kinda, I, it, it, I think it's one of those places, right? Depending on, you know, which way you angle the paper and how you read it and what you wanna put on, you know, emphasis you wanna put on. You could read it, yeah, you could read it a couple of different ways, but, um, but I, but that's the way I took it, what, is that it was.
Yeah.
That, that the instructor would make a proposal and then ultimately it would be the superintendent in the, would, would finalize it.
Right. Yeah, but they, like Mike said, they were on board. It's part of that.
Well, step one is the board creates the two positions.
Step one is.
Two is the principal superintendent, yada, yada, yada.
Correct.
Designates the two students.
Right.
So we have to do, take step one. We have to do create the positions first.
Yeah, wouldn't that contemplate that we need to revise the original, um, approval, the, the document, the resolution that approved it? And that would give us an opportunity to look at the whole thing and see if there's any other changes that we need to.
Yeah, I, I, I actually was just contemplating a motion that said that we, you know, add, when I was actually contemplating was something that would along the lines of to add two, uh, non-voting positions on the, you know, community solidarity for student representatives to be selected by P H F staff as, um, um, as outlined in the proposal. That's, I was kind of going along those lines. Mike, a real bigger question would be I don't know whether or not we need an actual agenda item to vote on it.
I'm actually not sure.
Yeah, typically if we're gonna vote on something, we have it as an agenda item.
Yeah, but either way, though, this is the same as the Board of Ed having the student representation. They're just taking part in the meetings. They're not having a vote, so it's not changing any part of the committee.
Except for there, a lot of times, if you, if you're not a member of the committee, right, then, then generally speaking, you would speak during public comment. The student representatives can speak during the meetings. They actually will present to the, to the Board of Education during those meetings, et cetera, so. So it's a little different. I understand why they're looking to create it. I also think it does create that little bit more ownership, um.
This will be the same thing, cause they want them to participate in the meetings, not just the public comment.
Yeah.
But it's the same as the Board of Ed where they're they're not voting, so it doesn't matter.
Yes.
We're not changing the construct of the committee. We're just it's like an honorary position.
Bobby, you wanna make the motion?
Sure. I'll make the motion that we add two students from the high school for the solidarity committee as non-voting members.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, and, and the discussion? I think it's a good idea. Maybe we're overcomplicating it, but I think it's a simple solution. All right. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions? Motion carries. Oh, Rick, you are there. Hi, Rick.
I'm here.
All right.
I, I vote in favor.
Okay, very good. All right, good. You got that done. That's great. Thank you very much. Rick, were you, were you, were you on here for the budget vote at all?
Uh, no, I was trying to get on and, uh, I was having technical difficulties for the first five or ten minutes. So I missed that.
All right.
Uh, how did it go?
Uh, it went four, uh, four to two.
Okay.
In favor, yeah, thank you, in favor.
Okay. Well, that's good.
I think so. All right, uh, next, um, we, we do this every year. Uh, Michael Van Deiver will be coming up and presenting overview and audit results for the last year. Michael, welcome.
Good evening. We're having this evening. You can do a public comment?
We haven't done public comment yet. You wanna do public comment? Public comment comes right after, it should be on the agenda after.
It's on the agenda.
Mike, Mike, can I see what else? No, I just, there's only, you know, there's, you can see one more.
Yeah, that's what I saw. It was on here.
Yeah, it's after.
Okay, it's under correspondence. Yeah, you're good.
Presentation.
It's a resolution is the one after.
I got it.
All right, I, I promise to be quick. Um, again, my name is Mike Van Deventer. I'm a partner at Mahoney Sable, uh, ultimately responsible for overseeing and issuing the audit reports on behalf of the firm. Uh, hopefully by this, uh, point, you have received copies of the reports that were issued in connection with the audit. Again, this evening, I'm gonna run through my presentation. Um, it covers the scope of work, the audit reports that were issued. I'll provide some overall financial highlights. I'll make a required communications and certainly be happy to answer any questions that the board members may have. Um, so turning to slide two, as far as the scope of work, uh, no changes from, uh, the scope of work from prior years. We did do an audit of the town's financial statements. We performed that audit in accordance with both the auditing standards issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants as well as the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. Uh, in addition, based on the level of federal and state funding that was received and expended by the town, we did perform both federal and state single audits. Uh, we also perform an agreed-upon procedures engagement on the end of school year reports that are filed by uh, the school district with the State of Connecticut Department of Education. Uh, in addition to those that test services, uh, where we actually issue, uh, a report, um, we also provide some non-audit services for the town, so we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, the schedule of federal awards and the schedule of state financial assistance and related notes based on the information obtained as part of the audit. Uh, we also assist in converting the town's governmental fund financial statements to the government-wide financial statements. Uh, in order for the firm to be, uh, independent of the town and be able to perform those services, uh, management is required to oversee those services and accept responsibility for them. Again, Tom Robinson is the Director of Finance, uh, accepted responsibility for those services and therefore we remain independent of the town. Uh, in connection with the audit, we do it through multiple reports. Uh, in terms of the report on the financial statements, we did issue unmodified clean opinions on your financial statements. Again, an unmodified opinion is expressed when we've concluded that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Again, I do like to point out, our opinion does provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from a material misstatement, whether due to error or fraud. Um, again, we do not provide absolute assurance. We do not test every transaction. Uh, we do utilize sampling in our audit methodology, um, and therefore, again, we cannot provide absolute assurance. Uh, in addition to the report on the financial statements, we do issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. Uh, if you read this report, we do not actually express an opinion on the town's compliance with laws and regulations or on the effectiveness of the town's internal controls over financial reporting. Essentially, during the course of performing the audit on the financial statements, if we become aware of or identify immaterial non-compliance with laws and regulations or a significant deficiency or material weakness in your internal controls, we are required to include it in this report. Um, again, we're not reporting any such matters. Uh, in connection with the federal single audit, we issue a report on compliance, uh, on, and on internal control at the federal award level. In this report, we do actually express an opinion on the town's compliance with your, uh, major federal programs. For fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, total federal awards that were expended were approximately three million. Uh, the major program was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, also known as the American Rescue Plan Act funds of about one point one million. Uh, again, we did issue unmodified clean opinions on your compliance over that program and we do not report any deficiencies over compliance. Uh, we issue a similar report in connection with the state's single audit. Uh, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, the total state financial assistance that was expended by the town was approximately eight point one million. Uh, the majority of that consists of your education cost sharing funds. Um, the portion that was considered to be exempt or not exempt from our testing was about two point seven million. Your major programs were the open choice funds at the Board of Ed, the regional and local improvement grant, and then the Community Connectivity Grant Program. Again, issued unmodified clean opinions on compliance over those programs and we did not report any internal control deficiencies over compliance. And again, the primary compliance requirement is charging allowable costs. So we do, do a lot of testing to make sure what you're spending those grants on are allowed to go under the grant. Uh, next section goes over your financial highlights. Again, there's a lot of financial information that's included in the financial statements. Again, it's over a hundred pages. Um, this section, uh, again, provides some overall highlights, certainly to the extent, uh, I'm aware of any, uh, financial, uh, issues, uh, I would include them in these, uh, overall highlights. Um, the first slide goes over your general fund budgetary highlights. Um, again, your, your final budget did include the use of fund balance in the amount of about seven hundred and eighty-four thousand to balance your revenues and expenditures. Your actual change in fund balance was an increase of about nine hundred and ten thousand, so that resulted in an overall favorable budgetary variance of about one point six million. Um, that one point six million was really driven by a, a revenue surplus of about seven hundred and sixty-one thousand. Uh, you had favorable variances on your, your tax collections, building permits, uh, police private duty charges, and then interest income. And then overall expenditures were approximately nine hundred and thirty-three thousand less than budgeted. Again, no budgetary compliance issues were identified during the course of, uh, our auto work. Uh, next slide goes over your governmental fund, uh, financial statement highlights. Again, this includes your general fund on a GAAP basis as well as all of your special revenue and capital project funds. Uh, the total combined ending fund balances reported by the town was approximately fourteen point nine million. Um, that was an increase of about six hundred and eighty-three thousand from the prior year. Uh, in terms of the overall fund balances, approximately eight point nine million is in your general fund. Um, that was an increase of about nine hundred and forty-three thousand from the prior year. Um, the capital project fund had an ending fund balance of about eighty thousand. Um, that was a decrease of about one point two million from the prior year. Um, and again, that was the spending down of the, uh, the restricted proceeds. Uh, your capital non-recurring fund had an ending fund balance of about three billion. That was an increase of about three hundred and eighty-seven thousand from the prior year. And then all of the other funds of the town had an ending fund balance of approximately two point nine million, uh, which was a decrease of about fifty-four thousand from the prior year. Again, in, important to understand the activities that occur within these funds as ultimately, um, they could impact the overall general fund, uh, to the extent you need to budget for any, uh, deficits or deficiencies. Um, the town continues to report, uh, unassigned deficits in the sewer and operating fund. Um, again, the deficit in the sewer fund was approximately two hundred and seventy-two thousand, uh, and the water fund was approximately one hundred and thirty-four thousand. Um, again, the town has done a good job at decreasing the deficit that has been reported in these funds over the last several years. Again, continue to, to keep that in mind as you, uh, budget for the sewer and the water revenues. Um, those funds should be self-sustaining and be able to cover the expenditures as well as the deficits in the funds.
Can I ask you one question?
Yep.
Is this six hundred and eighty-three thousand?
No, it is literally six hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I did check that as well.
All right.
But yeah, you have some that go one way and then others that go the other way and they just added up to six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, next slide goes over your government-wide financial statements. So this converts your governmental fund financial statements to a full accrual basis of accounting similar to a, a, uh, company. Um, you do reflect all of your capital assets as well as the long-term debt of the town. Um, the focus on the government-wide financial statements are on your overall unrestricted net position in your long-term liabilities. Um, again, the town is reporting an unrestricted net position of approximately two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Um, that unrestricted net position really reflects your unrestricted reserves, offset by your long-term liabilities for retirement benefits, uh, which again are being funded over time through actuarial required, uh, contributions. Uh, in terms of the, uh, net pension liabilities, the town and the police plan were reporting a, a net pension liability of about ten point six million. Um, that plan was approximately sixty-six point, uh, one-four percent funded. Um, again, that was compared to about sixty-five percent in the prior year. Again, there were really no significant, uh, changes in the actuarial assumptions that were utilized in, uh, developing those liabilities. Um, you do, you continue to report a net pension liability for the volunteer firefighter plan of about nine hundred and seventeen thousand. Um, that plan is currently thirty-nine percent funded. Um, that's an increase over, uh, thirty-four percent funded as, as of the, uh, prior year. Again, no significant changes in the actuarial assumptions that were utilized to calculate those liabilities. Again, this last section goes over our required communications. Um, and again, our, these communications are really geared towards when we run into issues or we're communicating, you know, certain findings in connection with the audit. Um, again, it was a very clean audit from our perspective, so, um, these communications are brief. Um, the first item here talks about our responsibility under our auditing standards. Again, although we assist in the preparation of the financial statements, they are the responsibility of the town. Um, again, it's our responsibility to perform our audit procedures and express our opinion on those statements. Uh, in terms of the plan, scope, and timing the audit, again, no changes in the overall scope of work that was originally agreed upon. Um, we did obtain two one-month extensions from the Office of Policy and Management. Um, and that was really due to some scheduling issues, uh, with completing the audit. Uh, in terms of significant audit findings, again, we do review your accounting policies and practices. Um, there were no new accounting standards that were implemented by the town, um, that had an impact on the financial statements. Uh, as I mentioned before, the financial statements do include some significant estimates. Those consist of estimated useful lives assigned to your capital assets and the discount rates that are utilized, uh, to determine your net pension and O P E V liabilities. We did review those estimates. We did deem them reasonable and consistent with what other municipalities are utilizing. I'm happy to report that there were no significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Again, everything that we had requested was provided to us. Um, there were no audit adjustments. Uh, we had no uncorrected misstatements. Uh, we had no disagreements with management. We did obtain a management representation letter. Um, again, there were no unusual representations that we, uh, requested from management. And again, I just give the board members the example. If during the process of performing the audit, we were unable to substantiate a transaction and then we ended up relying on the representations from management regarding that transaction, we would disclose that too. Um, and again, we're not aware of any consultations by management with, with any other independent accountants. Um, again, if management did consult with other accountants about an audit issue or an accounting issue, uh, we would need to be aware of that and have a discussion with those, uh, accountants and make that disclosure to you. Um, again, not aware of that, uh, happening. So with that, that concludes the presentation. Again, happy to answer any questions that the board members may have.
Um, how would you summarize this to the folks that are watching at home, uh, to the residents of the town? How would you summarize the state of our budget and the state of the books as you've gone through it?
Yeah, so, um, again, it was from, from an audit perspective, it was a clean audit. We had no significant findings. Um, you know, certainly from a board perspective, um, that is something that we'd want to see. Um, I do always bring up the fact that, uh, we have not had an audit adjustment in, in, uh, several years, if ever. Um, so we will get them at some point in time, but again, it's a, a clean audit from that perspective. Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Well, only comment is, you know, thank you, and, uh, you know, nice job keeping your record intact.
Absolutely. Michael, thank you very much for all that. We appreciate that. All right, any public comments? Anybody online? Anybody in the audience? All right, so. That's the next one coming up.
That's the next one.
There you go. But you're running top of stuff though. That's okay. That's okay.
It's going around tonight.
Yeah, it is. I know I got it right. I checked a couple of them. All right. So next is a resolution to appoint the auditor of public accounts. Uh, that's Mahoney Sable, so, um.
Would someone like to read this?
Appointment of auditor. All right, John, you got it.
Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, dated April second, twenty twenty-five, appointment of the auditor of public accounts. Resolve that pursuant to section four oh seven of the Portland Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby appoints the firm of Mahoney Sable of one eighty Glastonbury Boulevard, Suite four hundred, Glastonbury, Connecticut, zero six zero three three. You audited the books and records of the town for the fiscal period July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Very good. Right. Uh, next is Tom, monthly budget report. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Tom. Great job.
All this gray hair came from state and federal audits I used to do.
Thanks.
Now we've, uh, hit up the revenues, but, but, so I did just, um, since I provided that for you guys, if you want to take a look whenever, um, the, the text that tell what revenue had been posted, uh, this month yet, since interest hadn't been posted. Uh, they have been counting orders on vacation. So just going to go over the, uh, expenses with you, hit the highlights on those. Uh, so you go to page three. I always, uh, again, with, uh, expenses, I usually talk about things that are not going well and sort of things that are going well, but just, uh, I page three of the town council, um, as you can see there in, uh, three, seven, oh, one, nine, object, the oh, one, oh, one, four. Object there, you can see it where.
Apologies, I'm not sure. We're on page three.
Page three in the corner.
Well, no, I do. We have page one and two, then we have page one. So you're on, we're on page one.
Page three of that.
We have this.
Yeah, that's the authorized.
The first two is revenue.
Right. Right.
Yes. Okay, so that we're at the, the, the department is the town council, uh, planning and development matters. We, we spoke about this. There's been a couple lawsuits and other planning and development matters that have been going on. Um, one of those lawsuits, I think wrapped up, as Mike had alluded to, uh, recently, so hopefully there will be, uh, less spending uh, the rest of the year on that, uh, area other than, but as you can tell here, we're only with six thousand left. It's clearly going to go over budget in this lineup and we're going to keep watching that, but that was the, you know, cases that you can't uh, do much about once the, once the, uh, case starts or the, um, the, uh, the, the items out there. So we're going to watch that going forward. Um, there are some, there is a property, I believe, that we're working on, possibly some, working on some foreclosure work on. So you'll probably see some expenses out of the tax matters, um, coming up, uh, as well, but, uh, page five. Um, police, we've, we've spoken about police, uh, but again, conference meetings and dues as, uh, uh, there's some level of trainings that have gone on. There's been a lot of new, uh, officers, so we have some additional trainings and they're the, they only show about, uh, three hundred dollars left. That item, that would be very challenging to stay within that number. Um, and miscellaneous, uh, that was, there's normally that, not, there's usually not too much out of there, but what we've been charging there lately is um, a lot of the cell tower companies, um, have, have a sort of charge of administrative fee when the detective's doing a, a dump on the, uh, the phones, the cell phones. So you're seeing that, uh, that, that so far to date, that's about three hundred and forty dollars of the charge there. The various, uh, cellphone companies will charge them when they request that data. Um, and then the other things they've been doing, a credible, uh, law addition of books for about four hundred and twenty. And then there's some about a hundred eighty-seven that was related to the Halloween at Main Street. Page six. Uh, part-time, uh, building official, uh, part-time payroll, we have zero, uh, budgeted there. If the building official uh, is out, um, we've been having to backfill that position while he's away. Um, so, um, right now we're about eighty-nine hundred dollars over, uh, budget on that line and uh, there's a possibility he may go, be going out again in the future. Um, so we'll have to, uh, you know, we do, we're going to have to spend money there to, uh, to produce a backup feature as all these projects are going on.
Is he out on paid leave or?
Uh, I believe it would be, uh, probably, um, it would be through our, uh, short-term disability, I believe, will be when the time is right, but, um.
I'm saying, will we just move his payroll down to cover that or?
No, there's, there's a payment there. If, if not in full, our payment is. Uh, page, uh, uh, just below there in overtime thirty-one. So, um, o- overtime was, uh, that's just, uh, some, you see that's a zero line item, uh, the administrative assistant has been granted ability to work some overtime as the director position continues to be vacant. So we're seeing that, uh, that's being reviewed by the interim, uh, helper there. Mike is, is, uh, monitoring that. Um, oh, thirty-two, this is some line items we've been touching upon the whole year, thirteen, oh, two overtime. Uh, that one is budgeted fifteen thousand. Today we spent twenty thousand, seven thirty-five. Um, oh, thirty-two, thirty-one thousand service contracts. We have ninety-five hundred budgeted. Um, eighty-four, ninety-one is spent to date. Um, so we have, those are some of the areas we've been talking about to date. Oh, thirty-two, sixty-one, oh, three, which is equipment supplies. Um, that one we have twenty thousand budgeted. And sixteen is, uh, sixteen, six is spent to date, but the encumbrance is around thirty-five hundred. So you're going to continue to watch there. So that was, uh, your information on the highway department. Page seven, vehicle maintenance. Uh, globally, the equipment repairs is doing okay. Uh, encumbrances are there sometimes as a placeholder. But, uh, as you do go across, you have seventy-six thousand spent, forty-two encumbered, one eleven remaining. So that's going to be our item we'll keep watching. There has been a few, um, repairs that have come across that have hit on some of the larger dump trucks that have been, uh, some costly repairs. Uh, sixty-one, oh, one, uniforms. There's an overage in that due to the fact that there was employees that have left and have been replaced, so that previous employee used their uniforms and then new employee gets to get uniforms. Uh, going down, the next line is, uh, the overall engineer. So we only have about fourteen thousand, even three left in global budget there. Uh, that, you know, we have to keep going and watching on that. That's going to be harder to stay within that uh, with some of these, um, projects that have been going on. Uh, miscellaneous engineering, obviously again, is up to uh, thirteen thousand. So hopefully we can get to go ahead on, uh, um, the, uh, brownstone, uh, for the airline trail entranceway project there to, uh, get that where the, the project gets developed and, and run through the grant. So that's just wanted to give you there. That's a watch and we talked about that. Uh, page, um, thirty, eight, sorry, Department thirty-seven, um, overtime. Um, the, uh, building department, building maintenance department is six thousand budgeted, spent five thousand, six eighty to date. Um, there have been some storms, uh, some projects as well that we've been running that have required them to come in and out um, four hours after hour. So let's, uh, contractors in. You see on oh, thirty-seven. You see on oh thirty-seven, the equipment repair, but seven thousand budgeted, thirty-six hundred. Um, expended, uh, five thousand, uh, nine sixty encumbered. I did notice that in that encumbrance, the one thousand five seventy-five of that five nine sixty. Those actually could be closed. I did close it today, so I'll actually improve that, so it's not gonna be two, five, nine, eight over. Um, it will be, uh. Only one oh two, three over, uh, with, with the encumbrances that are there. Uh, what we're seeing in that, there was, uh, some repairs that were required at the town hall, water fountain. Uh, there's some carpet cleaning that was required, required. There was, uh. Floats, they call it repair at the senior center. And there was a couple of the overhead doors, uh, that needed, uh, work about four hundred and thirty-five, forty-one, thousand seventy-two, and nine four. And then there was some, uh, concrete, uh, repair work. Sixty-eight hundred, uh, custodial supplies. Um, the, uh. Uh, Mike is, uh, looking into reviewing that with the, uh, lead man. Um, so that's, that's gonna be a watch and then look at. And, uh, see where we're, we're at there. I did cost supplies have risen in that, so there is a rise in the cost as well. Page of nine. Snow removal. This hasn't changed much, obviously, but just a global twenty-eight thousand dollar overage in that budget. Um, page ten. The capital expenditure commission, so. Pretty relatively small budget, five hundred dollars, about six hundred, one dollars was used by the board to run all the minutes that were required for that. So that obviously has an overage in it. Page eleven. Senior, um, center instructional, um, fees, two thousand two fifty, two thousand three sixty. Has been expended. That's a one, I think they did request, I think additional months next year in this line. This is, you know. Programs that are being run. That have instructor, so they get charged there and then the, uh. And then in theory, there's a revenue stream on it, but, uh. We're trying to, uh, you know, they're, they're trying to get the more, um, projects run therefore, that's why there's more spending in that line. Uh, next one down was the agent, miserable agent of the elderly van driver statements. Thirty-two thousand is budgeted, twenty-nine thousand, three fifty-six has been expended. Only two thousand, uh, six forty-three remaining. Um, we keep running the, uh, clearly if we keep running to the level, if we leave the month, the day was thirty-one. Hundred dollars, if we keep running to that level, we will. Be in a lost position. So the, um, first selectmen will have to review that with the director to determine, you know, how they wanted to. Manage that the rest of the fiscal year. Oh, sixty-five. Um, service contracts, thirty-one thousand. I always spoke about that in the past, but the seventeen thousand is budgeted, fifteen thousand, nine, one, four expended. Two thousand, seven oh two, covered. Um, resulting in an overage of one, six, one, seven. Those were the, uh, items that I just wanted to touch upon. There are definitely some other items that are positive, but I'd like to touch on the areas that we watch and we want to concern. And we have, uh, the directors to, uh, to watch those and all the interim personnel that's helping. There's a lot of information to digest, so. If any questions, let me know or let me know and I'll answer them for you. Right, guys?
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much, Tom. Could you read through this the next day or so? You have questions, you could reach out to me to Tom. All right, next item is our tax suspense list. So. This list, we, we do this every year. Uh, this is a list of folks that owe some kind of property tax. Uh, that we just have not been able to. Achieve that money. So the, the list here is based on strictly either those that have, that have died. Or those that we just can't find. Uh, the post office sends back for mail, so these are unfindable. So we're not giving up on it. Or we put it into a different category of money that we most likely won't see, but we don't want to keep it under the books. So Tom, is that the correct way of describing it? Okay. Okay, pretty good. We got that. Uh, we're probably not gonna see this, but we're not gonna wipe it off the books completely, so. Uh, take a look at it. See if you have any questions on this. I don't believe there's any action we have to take. More than FYI. That's all we need to just prove, right? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, your motion to accept this.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh.
Thank you, Tom.
That we approve the, uh, tax suspense list as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, just to. Maybe a little more thorough discussion on what, what is, is that? This is my first time on this, so. It, I mean, it sounds like these are debts we never expect to ever make good on. But what, what's the process that gets us to this document here?
So suspense, I mean, I'm sure the tax office could do a better job than I'm gonna do, but. The way to explain it is you have properties. Um, there's, there's, uh, the regular outstanding collectible. Um, and you, you know, they keep going after that. They keep searching, they keep trying to get the money, sending out the minions. Sometimes we do tax sales, things of that nature. And if there's a, you know, point in time based on the statute that allows them to kind of. Take it from the collectible. So there, there's a collectible before where you say, this is the percentage of what we've have outstanding that we collect. So it takes the, this collectible piece and it moves it to what's called the suspense. So there's out there in their tax system, there's a tax suspense. Collection. And, uh, what it does is it takes it off of the, the outstanding list. And moves it over as suspense for things that you really not, probably likely never gonna collect. Now, they do stay on there for the process. Until the required throttle is there. And you do, yeah, suspense collections. Throughout the year. Um, so monies can be done off of, collected off of suspense. Um, the, the town of Portland has kind of done it more. There's some places will. Completely. Take a year of motor vehicle and just move it to suspense, just. Uh, the, we've been doing it more of if. Passed away or the, the, the address keeps coming back, address unknown, address unknown. So. That moves over to suspense. It kind of makes the collectible a little better. It moves it off over to the, the suspense list. Cleans up the outstanding receivable to more so, or reasonable number that you're hopefully gonna achieve. That hope.
No, it does. So the suspend, once it's on suspense, it's not, we're not giving up on it forever. It's, it may still be everest, but it's accounting wise, it cleans up.
Yeah, to leave out there that someone's passed away.
Well, that we can.
Why would you leave it in your?
Yeah.
You know, and the other thing is this, in the motor vehicle, they, they know, so if you try to. If you, if that person, somebody has that car and they try to register with that. It's gonna flag.
That's still registered with the state. They have that.
Yeah, it's still gonna flag out.
Even if we suspended.
If we suspend it, it could still flag out and then they have to get it, they gotta pay for it. Before, that's how you'll find them, some of the people.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But that's, that's kind of what it is. It's just a practice we do every year. It's, it's a. The, every tax, every tax office has that every year that we go there to do that and move items over to suspense.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Tom. We've all been through this, first time we've all been through this.
It is. My first suspense list.
Have a cupcake later. I can celebrate. You can celebrate, absolutely. I mean, it's a small amount, but still. Um, we gotta look at it though, every dollar. All right, we've got, got a second, got a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, um, the next motion is for participating in the. Um, Neighborhood Assistance Act. Uh, which we have done for many years. I know Susan was part of it. Ryan continued it and I'd like to continue it. Uh, as well, so could I have someone read this resolution?
Certainly.
All right, it's a short one this time.
It's a short one this time.
Not a lot of numbers.
There's not a lot of numbers.
Well, not a lot of.
Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, excuse me, April. Second, twenty twenty-five, the twenty twenty-five Neighborhood Assistance Act. Participation, a program participation, whereas the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services is providing the Town of Portland the opportunity to participate. In the twenty twenty-five Neighborhood Assistance Act. Thus allowing interested nonprofit organizations within the municipality to submit application and whereas. In accordance with the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services, the Board of Selectmen shall hold a public hearing on all programs. And the governing body of the municipality must vote to approve these programs. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Town of. Portland Board of Selectmen does hereby designate the first selectman, Michael A. Pelton, as liaison to handle all Neighborhood Assistance Act matters.
Need a second to that resolution?
Did you make that as a motion?
I believe I did, but I, I make this as a motion.
All right, I'll second it.
Got it.
Well, but, yeah.
All right, I'll take it. There you go. And discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, thank you. So under appointments of boards and commissions, I really only just have a couple quick comments. So with regards to the two committees that we recently. Put into action, the Brownfields Area Steering Committee and the America two fifty committee. Both of those committees have started, in fact. Um, tonight at six o'clock was the first official meeting of the Brownfield Area Steering Committee at the library. I have the agenda, uh, the members that were selected, uh, are off and running and. I'm looking forward to the work that they're gonna do just as an FYI to this committee. Uh, the America two fifty committee, we have one more spot we have not filled. Um, the committee has still been started because all the primary members have been selected. It's just one alternate member that still needs to be selected. But we do have a Board of Ed member that needs to be slotted in, so, um, they were gonna vote last night. The Board of Ed on a member for that committee, they did not, they tabled it.
They tabled it.
So that will come up. Once they select someone, we will add that to. That committee, but because the committee's filled with the voting members, uh, they're off and running. Um, they had a good first meeting. Um, they were excited about their charge. Um, there are already numbers of ideas that they have for next year. They're communicating with the state organization that is helping to put this out along with the national organization that's. Um, you know, putting this effort in, so, uh, that's exciting. It's a big group. Uh, but that'll probably be on our next meeting once Board of Ed has someone to add to that, so. That's the only thing I have for boards and commissions. Does anybody else have?
Nothing.
On our side. Okay, good. All right, refunds of excess payments. Bobby?
We'll make a motion for a refund of excess payment Nissan Infinity LT LLC. One hundred sixty-six dollars, twenty-six cents.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. That was an easy one. All right, status reports.
I can give you Board of Ed. I attended last evening. Um, they had their usual Portland Public School Spotlight. Last night was Gildersleeve Robotics. I guess they call it a team. It's a, it's a new group that the kids have. Um, they were making structures with Legos. And I never knew that you could program Legos. They, they built submarines and then one of the young guys came up and, and showed how it worked and if it saw a light color. The propeller would go in a reverse direction to back it up. I mean, if it had a, a dark color, it would go the other way. It was pretty impressive. Um, they had a huge turnout for it, so they hope to do it again next year. Um, the student representative gave a number of updates. Um, the, the, the folks up at the high school have taken their PSATs and SATs. Um, the spring sports have begun. Uh, anything goes. The play was a huge success. Their prom is gonna be at Glastonbury Hills Country Club. And one, their project grad fundraiser is going again, so if anybody wants to block somebody's front yard with a bunch of pink flamingos. Just reach out to the high school and they'll help you out and get you going. Superintendent Charles Britton, um, gave his usual report. He gave an enrollment report. Um, a budget comparison of Portland compared to other similar sized schools and we're smack dab in the middle. Uh, and there was a discussion of the budget process in our meeting last week, uh, and. Everybody, he was thoroughly impressed by the work and again, like you said. Of all the different departments coming forward voluntarily and, and working towards a common goal, so we said that all went well. Uh, and then the, um. An update was provided by the business and financial individual from, uh, Board of Education and just provided information. On the last quarter and appears that right now they have a hundred thousand dollar surplus, possibly a little more. They're getting some state money. They're finally getting the information that they wanted. So all news sounded good. That's yep, Dave.
Fantastic, fantastic. Give anything you have to grant.
Um, just a couple, I guess, you know, quick ones, uh, from a water and sewer perspective. I think the biggest item is we, we did have, um, without getting into too much detail on negotiating. Session or meeting greet slash negotiating to get a little bit of the, the perspectives with MDC, um. And I think that went pretty much as we expected it would go as, as the initial one for, with you sitting in that seat. Um. And I'll say from a, I was also happy to see, very pleased to see, I'll kind of do this from a Prox and Rec, even though it wasn't part of the Prox and Rec meeting, um. I was pleased to see the news that the, those six pillars have been, or the eight pillars have been replaced. At the Riverfront Park, um.
Oh, can I, can I jump into that? I took a walk this morning and I went down, I was watching the guys working on him. And remember, we had a discussion about putting some kind of a. Uh, a platform in there that will hold them in place, but keep them off the pavement. It would appear that they put something like that in. There looks like there's about an inch spacer. Between the bottom of the, the post and the concrete.
Everyone should have gotten the pictures today. It will email itself.
And I, and I guess just to finish that off, and I think that, um, I know, I think Bob has said the same thing. I think we all. Kind of looked at it. It'd be nice for us to look at getting the other ones. Done while we can make sure they're done in the same manner by the same vendor. Um, for aesthetic reasons, also kind of, they're all the same age, so. So I think we should, we should definitely look at taking another swipe at that to try to get the other ones done. It, you know, even if it's ends up getting it ordered to get us done this, this fall. Um, it'll put us in a better position for the next bunch of years.
Absolutely. I know I reached out to Andy today, told him that, uh, that they're open for business there. They need to rent out or do something there, so.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was talking with Andy, um. Um, because we, we've got a few things going on right now. I think we've got three of the five concerts currently scheduled and thinking we were talking about those things, but. Yeah, I know that was one of the concerns because there are some events that are coming up in, in basically late April, early May, so.
Just to follow up on that with the other. Pillars are all, they've been determined structurally sound?
Well, they, they were not determined to be emergencies, right? So, and the budgeting initially was. Laid out as we should look at doing the, these eight, because without those eight, we would not have been able to reopen it, the structure for the summer. But what we also talked about is that, um. That the other ones aren't gonna be too far behind it, right? They're all the same age.
Did they report on that though? Is that the report says that? Because I know we had them assessed, right?
Didn't they? Yeah, they, I think that the ones that, the eight that were most emergent are the ones that we did. But the other ones that was determined, from my recollection, are also gonna have to be done. They just went out of that same emergency status as the. The, the, the ones that we ended up replacing.
And, and I spoke to Ryan Halpern today as well, and he's suggesting that the other pillars be stained as quick as possible so that at least it keeps that maintained until they are replaced.
Shouldn't have already been done, right? We've known about this for quite some time.
I guess weather-wise.
Well, it was very, it was very clear that, that we, we determined this before, that those posts were not. Pressure treated.
Not, it was not the season.
They were, they were, they were rotten, but these posts, as I, I saw them today, are green pressure treated, so it is very clear that these. Should last a lot longer.
Yes, yeah, these, these are contact, contact, and it sounds like, I didn't realize they were gonna put that spacer and I'm glad though.
Yeah.
That's good.
Jim, how many more posts are there?
Six.
Six.
Six. I think that we, we talked about it and, um, I think the issue was that the. Six. I think that we, we talked about it and um, I think the issue was that the. When, when it came to us from a budget standpoint, we had the monies to do the original eight. Um, not necessarily to do all fourteen. And then when we came, when we kind of revisited the issue. The um, the issue that we ran into was. Um, the order had already been placed for the materials to do the first eight. And we didn't want to slow those down. So we said, okay, we'll roll the first ones and then like it, then, then look at doing a second. A second phase, but we wanted to time it so that it ends up being done by the, you know. We wanted it all end up looking the same and being the same and, you know, resolving the same issue.
All right, thank you. Um, I only have two quick comments. Uh, we've talked about the other events already. Other things going on in time last meeting. Uh, earlier this week, I had a uh meeting with. All the folks in our, all our, all our department heads that deal with human res- human services. Library, uh, senior center, uh, youth services, just about what we could do to tie our services together. We don't have a lot of funding. It used to be a funded position years ago. And it's ended up kind of falling into the buckets of people in town that are doing the best they can in their departments. So we got everyone together, uh, the councils from each of the schools and all these folks, and we are. Kind of re-putting that group together so that we can provide services. Uh, that are needed to the folks that need them in town. So uh, it's something that I think connecting up. Um, the people that are motivated and have the ability to help together is gonna make it better for those in town that need it. So. Uh, it's one of the projects I'm working on. Uh, the first meeting went well. Uh, many of these are already doing good work, but they all uh expressed an interest in knowing what the capacity of others in town are. So they can send it to the right place. So again, it's like everything, we gotta connect it all up and make it work in the budget framework that we have. So. That was what happened this week. And to add on to one thing that Jim said. Um, because we are looking to become water self-sufficient, um, that's the reason we're talking with MDC to make sure that we do the transition. To where we are right now, to something uh where they become a backup to what we do. Um. It, it's important. So we're starting early, uh, and we're gonna be running those, those negotiations concurrently with getting the water up and running as best we can. So. Uh, I also met with the East Hampton uh town manager, David Cox, this morning. And uh, they're interested in water, something that's been discussed over the years. Um, so they're paying attention to what we do, but they'd love to be able to have water come through Portland to them. So it's something that. Um, that we'll be looking at over the months ahead. So uh, that's, that's a good, good target. So. That is all I have. Then went down to this table. Michael, any updates? All right, very good. Um, any public comments? Nothing online? All right, no one in the audience? All right, informal discussion. Nothing. All right. Um, follow-ups, uh, the town charter, the ethics ordinance, that can wait till. Some other time. I'm not ready to move on that unless anyone has something to talk about that. I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, gentlemen.